Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Aiken City Council October 14th meeting. First, we'll have the invocation and pledge to the flag, but before that, I wanted to let you know, for those of you who don't know already, that the father of our mayor, the Honorable Rick Osborn's father passed on Saturday evening, and tonight they are at visitation, so I am presiding over this meeting in his absence. So first, we'll have the invocation by Reverend Paul Bush from Concerned Ministers Fellowship.
Mayor Pro Tem to all of your cabinet, thank you for the opportunity to be able to pray for our city. God, as we are led by before you now, we thank you for this moment in time that you've allowed us to pause and come together, that we might take care of business as stewardship that you've placed us over here on earth. We thank you for the way that you've taken care of us throughout this day by not allowing any more to happen to us than we're able to bear. As we come together now and heart in mind, God, we ask that you might be in the midst of us, that you will lead us in decisions that need to be made, and God, that you will guide our tongues on things that need to be said. God, we pray for our city council at this time. We pray for each board member in the districts in which they represent. We pray for all those who stand behind me as citizens of this great city and of this great county. God, we ask that you would bless us in our endeavors. Certainly, last but not least, God, we ask that you would be with the family of our mayor, of your son and our brother. God, we ask that you would give that family strength at this time. We want to thank you for the life in which his father lived. And then, most of all, we would like to thank you for the seed that he left behind, that is now leading this city, leading this county called Aiken, South Carolina. God, we ask that you would be with them, give them strength is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. I ask Officer Davis to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have guidelines for all of our meetings. I'd like to read those to you. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed, and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, discipline, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Cordial and respectful communication is expected. During public hearing, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue, and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. With that being said, the only change we have to the agenda is a motion to remove item number one under petitions and requests, and that is the appeal of the business license by Cornerstone Ready Mix Concrete LLC. The minutes were delivered to council members days ago, and they've had time to review them. Is there a motion?
Let's move to approve the agenda first.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot to ask for approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I second Ed's motion.
You second?
Yes.
Councilwoman Price, second. Thank you. All in favor? The minutes were sent to council several days ago, and they have had the opportunity to review those minutes.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? On the presentations, number one, we have recognition of John McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. We do have tonight a special presentation for John. He's been the sound guy at our Hoplins Gardens Concert Series for over four decades, and he has done this strictly on a volunteer basis, and we would like to honor him for his faithful, dedicated service tonight.
Mr. McMahon, can you come forward?
And it reads with grateful appreciation to John McMahon for your time and dedication to the Hoplins Summer Concert Series, serving as sound guy from 1974 to 2019.
Okay, the second item on the presentations is a presentation with South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. It's the award of excellence to the City of Aiken Parks Recreation and Tourism Department. Stuart?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. We do have tonight, we're honored to have Jim Hedley, the Executive Director of the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, to present the award that we won at the annual conference that was held in Myrtle Beach, the 2019 Parks Excellence Award for cities with a population of 30,000 and greater, and this is recognized for the renovation and revitalization of the Eustace Park complex, and I would like to ask Mr. Hedley to come to the podium and make some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Hedley. Honored to be here again.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's certainly a pleasure to be here again, take that short little drive over from our offices are in Lexington, right on I-20 over here, to do a little celebration. I don't think we do enough of that. Each of you give your time, and certainly staff, especially in this instance, the PRT staff, give so much of their time. They're the ones that are out there that, you know, the public doesn't always get to see. They're there prior to the event with events set up and clean up afterwards, and they do such a phenomenal job. And with Jessica's, Jessica Campbell's leadership, it's certainly an honor and pleasure to have her as the Director for the City of Aiken. She actually serves on the Board of Directors, as we've actually, I think there's about four or five staff that have served on our Board of Directors for the Parks Recreation Association. On behalf of its SCRPA's membership and its over 1,100 members, it's great honor to be here to represent the 2019 Park Excellence Award for Population over 30,000. The Association's vision statement is creating community through people, parks, and programs. And it is, with the Eustace Park Project, does all of that. It is, was, I've been able to watch it, the revitalization of it, going back all the way through the years. It was an old land and water conservation project many, 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 many years ago. And then with the addition of the Lessey Price Senior Services Center right there on the corner, and connecting that whole area is absolutely phenomenal, and is really going to be, help that community create the vision that it so needs and desperately deserves.
This award is given to the agency whose new renovated or revitalized park has shown through as being the best in the state for this population category. Eustace Park has been property of the City of Aiken since 1897, originally consisting of 115 acres. The park currently sits on 7.94 acres with boundaries defined under the restriction of LWCF since 1970. In 2016, 5.59 acres of adjacent property was purchased for development of a senior and youth center. Combined with one acre of property owned by the city for stormwater management, this makes the park total just over 15.5 acres. Prior to revitalization, the park featured a playground with swings, two picnic shelters, basketball courts, tennis courts, and a short walking trail. Parking was limited, and stormwater runoff had created multiple landscape issues with areas of washout throughout the park. Through Capital Project sales tax funds and an LWCF grant, the Eustace Park revitalization project was launched. Concurrently, the city also proceeded with construction of the senior and youth center, funded with Capital Project sales tax funds, hospitality tax funds, and the South Carolina Department on Aging PIP grant. The first amenities within Eustace Park to be addressed were the two existing tennis courts. One of the tennis courts was converted into four pickleball courts during the rebuild projects. Next, the old playground was removed, and a new inclusive playground was installed to accommodate users of all abilities and levels. The walking trail was resurfaced and expanded around the new playground location. The revitalization included the installation of a surface parking lot with ADA accessibility, sidewalks, and walking trail connectors to the park. The parking area successfully connects Eustace Park to the adjacent Lessey B. Price Aiken Senior and Youth Center, which opened April 24, 2019. Thanks to this ambitious project, Aiken residents now have a safer, more attractive recreation facility that is a source of great community pride and will serve citizens for generations to come. It is with great honor that we recognize the City of Aiken with the 2019 Parks Excellence Award for Population over 30,000.
Can we have the Parks and Recreation staff come up and take a picture? And of course, we want you to be in at a council. You need to be included in this picture as well. We're so fortunate to have so many committed and dedicated employees in our city, and Jessica and her staff is only part of those. We have so many sitting in this room, and we are so grateful to have you as employees for the City of Aiken. Moving down to item number three, is a presentation by Aiken County Homeless Coalition. Stuart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Tonight, we do have a presentation, and it will be given by Ms. Roxanna Cirque on behalf of the Aiken County Homeless Coalition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you, such honorable counsel. The Aiken County Homeless Coalition is a grassroots organization made up of individuals concerned and dedicated to addressing the needs of those who are homeless, and including families, children, and students. The Coalition's goal is to prevent, support, and when possible, reverse homeless in our community. We are a relatively new organized entity with no intention of becoming a 501(c)(3), excuse me, entity. We realize that while there are no simple solutions to address the problem of homelessness and its effects on individuals in our community, awareness of this issue is critical if we are to provide. Our coalition works to provide a platform to exchange information, enhance and support the delivery of existing community services and resources, and raise awareness of the realities and difficulties of our unseen and unheard homeless community. We also believe that dialogue is the key in developing and creating change. As a coalition, we welcome the opportunity to work with local county, municipal governments, private groups, and agencies to identify housing needs and collaborate on solutions, including innovative and alternative concepts. I would like to mention two major initiatives our coalition has hailed and head-spearred. For many of us, the highlight of our week maybe will be a Sunday supper meal with family and friends. Since May of this year, on one Sunday a month, our coalition has organized, with the help of members of this community, a Sunday meal. The idea arose from the fact that area soup kitchens do not operate on Sundays, thereby posing a serious challenge to those who rely on such programs. Area churches and organizations have responded to this challenge by providing a home-cooked meal and staffing a local area church here in the city where those who are homeless can safely gather to eat and socialize. During several of these dinners, toiletries, food, and even hepatitis A vaccines have been made available to them. Flu shots will be available in our October meal, where we expect we will see a continued increase in those seeking such assistance. The second is the point-in-time count. PIT, short. This is a program required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our coalition has been involved with this for the past two years. PIT count is a volunteer-led effort to try to capture an accurate picture of the number of homeless individuals living in the community based on certain criteria. This data collection is used to gauge the extent of homelessness and help determine the services needed to prevent, reduce it, or end it. However, we have found that this data collection effort has its challenges and limitations, as it does not realistically portray an accurate picture of the homelessness situation in the county. We have, however, used this community tradition as an outreach activity and awareness tool. During this count, we have organized and provided health screening, mental health screenings, coats, gloves, toiletries, to reach out to the individuals who otherwise will not be seen. My name is Roxanna Cirque, and I am the Chair of the Aiken County Homeless Coalition. We are committed to the idea that all people have the right to be heard and to be treated with decency and respect. We further believe that it is the duty of a decent and respectful people to consider the needs of those truly in need. To this end, we raise our voice to address their needs. I am here tonight with other members of the coalition, and I would like them to stand. And they are from the executive board, representing the coalition to bring awareness to you who have the ability and means to please consider the plight of our brothers and sisters who are homeless or on the verge of homelessness, and those who deal with housing insecurities. We would like to extend an invitation to dialogue with all of you. You are also cordially invited to participate with us and attend our monthly meetings, or a Sunday meal, or volunteering with us during the PIT count. I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Roxanna. And I'm happy to be a part of this Homeless Coalition team as well. And we also thank you for providing the faith IDs to people who don't have IDs and have to come into a health center or a business and cannot do anything without those IDs. So we appreciate all of the work you do here in Aiken. Thank you.
Can you share the dates of these events that you were just speaking?
Absolutely. So the next, we have the Sunday meals, it's on the third Sunday of each month, and it is on 125 Union Street, and it's the St. Mary's, Mother Teresa's Hall. And you are welcome to come and observe, or welcome to volunteer. We are also on the PIT count, that is on the week of January the 22nd, and we are gathering groups in order to facilitate activities so that we can draw out the homeless individuals to come, and we offer, you know, different services for them while we count their numbers.
Have you conducted a PIT count yet?
We did that last year, yes, and the year before that. We were not as organized as we will probably and hopefully be this year.
What was the number for last year?
So the interesting part about that is that there are certain criteria that they have to meet, and the criteria is, and that's why it's kind of skewed, because according to the state criteria, or the federal criteria, is that if they are, if they spend the night, regardless of where it is, if they have a house on that Wednesday of that week, they are not considered homeless. So we cannot count them for the PIT count. However, we have discovered that there are many who, based on this criteria, do qualify as homeless, and so that's why we decided to organize ourselves into a coalition and take some action.
Do you have the numbers in the last couple of years, even though it's skewed?
Well, we submit those to the state, and they have not provided us with the numbers as of yet, from last year, or actually from January of this year.
But yours are just City of Aiken, what you guys did?
It's county.
County.
Yes, countywide, yes. And the meals that we are providing are only addressing the issue here in Aiken City. We are trying to expand to Midland Valley and also to North Augusta, which we haven't been able to do at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanna. Moving down to all business, we have approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. I recognize our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Council does have several appointments for consideration and vote tonight. Councilman Gerdo is recommending the reappointment of Phil Hagerty to the Building Code Appeals Committee for a term that would expire May 12, 2021, and he is also recommending the reappointment of Graham Reynolds to the General Aviation Commission for a term that would expire September 1, 2021.
Are there any more tonight? Is there a motion to accept the ones that have been nominated? I get a second? Second. All those in favor? Okay, all in favor. I'm sorry.
Now nominations.
And are there any nominations for our next meeting? I do have one. Dr. Lisa Handy for the Aquan Commission. Are there any more? Moving down to item number two, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and Zone at Residential Single Family RS10. By title, an ordinance to annex property located at 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and to zone the same residential single-family RS10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Comments from the audience? Comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. We do have this annexation before you. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended this at their September meeting, that it be annexed and zoned residential single-family RS10, and city council at the September 23rd meeting approved it on first reading. It is before you tonight for second and final reading, this ordinance to annex 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and Zone at Residential Single Family RS10.
All in favor?
Comments from the audience?
Comments from council? All in favor?
You got a bunch of them to do. You might as well get it right.
Coach G.
Gary, you and Ricky, you and Ed need to change spots.
Moving down to item number three, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 416 Pine Avenue Southeast and Zone at Residential Single Family RS8. By title, an ordinance to annex property located at 416 Pine Avenue Southeast and to zone the same residential single-family RS8. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'm sorry.
Now nominations.
And are there any nominations for our next meeting? I do have one. Dr. Lisa Handy for the Aquan Commission. Are there any more? Moving down to item number two. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and zone it residential, single-family RS 10. By title, an ordinance to annex property located at 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and to zone the same residential, single-family RS 10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Comments from the audience? Comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. We do have this annexation before you. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended this at their September meeting, that it be annexed and zoned residential, single-family RS 10. And city council at the September 23rd meeting approved it on first reading. It is before you tonight for second and final reading, this ordinance to annex 1746 Two Notch Road Southeast and zone it residential, single-family RS 10.
All in favor?
Question?
Ask for comments.
Again.
Comments? Comments from the audience?
Any comments from council?
Comments from council?
Favor.
All in favor?
You got a bunch of them to do. You might as well get it right.
Coach G.
You and I make.
Gary, you and Ricky, you and Ed need to change spots.
See that? We don't do that. Moving down to item number three. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 416 Pine Avenue Southeast and zone it residential, single-family RS 8. By title, an ordinance to annex property located at 416 Pine Avenue Southeast and to zone the same residential, single-family RS 8. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Thank you.
Just Ed G. and Leslie B.
You got them. Comments from the audience? Oh, excuse me. Recognize Mr. Beedenbo, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. We do have before you an annexation of 416 Pine Avenue Southeast. The Planning Commission heard this at their September 10th meeting and unanimously recommended it be annexed and zoned residential, single-family RS 8. The city council at the September 23rd meeting, you passed it on first reading unanimously, and it is before you tonight for second and final reading, the request to annex 416 Pine Avenue Southeast and rezone it residential, single-family RS 8.
Comments from?
Audience.
The audience? Comments from council? All in favor? That's unanimous. Moving down to item number four. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amended to land development regulations regarding performance guarantees. By title, an ordinance amended to land development regulations of the City of Aiken regarding performance guarantees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Comments from Mr. Beedenbo?
Thank you. The land development regulations that we have require performance bonds, letters of credit, and other sufficient surety to guarantee that infrastructure of developments can be completed, such as roads, sanitary sewers, stormwater, and sidewalks. In October 2017, we amended the land development regulations, and that consequence required that the timing of the guarantees be issued before a grading permit is issued. And subsequent to that amendment, we have found that the timing of requiring these guarantees could be more appropriate, and our process is significantly more onerous than other communities and counties in the CSRA. We looked at Aiken County and North Augusta here, and then Columbia County and Richmond County, Augusta-Richmond County as well. Performance guarantees are still required, but the timing to allow site improvements done prior to the issuance of surety while still permitting staff to have the ability that these improvements are adequate and bonded when timed with the issue of other permits, such as building permits. And council approved this at first reading at the September 23rd meeting, and it is before you tonight for second reading.
Comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Moving down to item number five. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the city code regarding special tax assessment for rehabilitated historic properties. By title, an ordinance amended to Aiken City Code regarding special real property tax assessments for rehabilitated historic properties. Comments from?
So moved.
Now a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I got it.
Comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. The DRB has reviewed and recommended to city council that the city code be amended regarding the special tax assessments. The DRB had several meetings in the spring and summer about this matter and considered amendments to ensure that there is transparency and consistency in its implementation while preserving the fundamental incentive of a 10-year freeze on the property tax value of participating properties. And since we have, in the inception of this program, 22 properties have received final certification, and two more have received preliminary certification. A recent application for assessment brought to staff's attention that there are some discrepancies between the letter of the law and the city code and the actual practice since the program's inception. And the Design Review Board has recommended some changes to provide specific direction regarding the applicability to those properties having received certification. There are seven properties that, before the implementation date of this text amendment, this assessment period has not yet expired. They would be allowed to, they've been provided direction to staff. And we had some discussion about this, and it passed first reading on, at the September 23rd meeting, and it is before you tonight for second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Moving down to item number six. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving lease agreement for use of property at 1613 Two Notch Road by Aiken Community Theater. By title, an ordinance approving the lease of 1613 Two Notch Road to the Aiken Community Theater. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Second? Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The Aiken Community Theater has been working with staff in our Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department regarding the building located at the corner of Price Avenue and Two Notch Road, 1613 Two Notch Road. The building was originally constructed by the Aiken Community Playhouse in the late 1960s, and until 2003, served as the playhouse location before they moved downtown to the facility on Newberry Street. Since 2017, or in the interim period between 2003 to 2017, it served primarily as a function for our pottery classes and storage as well. Since 2017, the community theater has occasionally rented the space and has made some minor interior improvements. And they wish to expand their use of the facility and are willing to make capital improvements so that it can function as a performing arts theater. The lease that has been, is before council tonight, has no annual rental charge, but the theater will pay $30 per hour per city staff member needed. We did approve this at first reading at the September 23rd meeting. However, I know representatives from the theater were late, and we had already passed the meeting, so we have Mr. Watley here tonight if there are any questions or questions of staff, but it is before you tonight for second and final reading.
Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
I just have a question on the lease. I know downtown, a couple of times, we've wanted to use the building, and there's been some conflicts. Do we have provision in this lease for us to be able to use this building? I didn't see one.
I don't believe we have anything to that effect for that, correct? That is a good observation, Councilman Woltz.
I mean, something we need to add in? I mean?
I would, I mean, we could, if it is council's desire. While I don't imagine, at this point, sitting here today, that there would be a need for that. Down the road, you're right, during the course of the lease, that could be something that is needed or necessary.
Mm-hmm. So, I would suggest we add that into it.
Well, have we ever used it for anything in the past, since it became vacant?
That's a question I will have Ms. Campbell answer. I know primarily, it's been mostly used by the theater since we abandoned the pottery program.
Good evening. To answer your question, Councilman Gerdo, the facility has been vacant from PRT usage for three years. And there's a lot of capital improvements that will need to be done for it even to function for the playhouse to utilize. Right now, they can't get in there and do rehearsal space, but in terms of actually opening up for public viewing of performances, or for another entity to utilize in some manner, it's not at that point. I believe maybe when improvements are made, and we feel like the playhouse is ready to open it up for public performances, then we could possibly revisit at that time if there's.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. It's the future.
Certainly.
Not now, but down the road.
My question is, is the lease, how long is the lease?
I believe five years. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up here with me.
That is correct. It is five years.
And there, I read there where they are willing to make the capital improvements so it can function. Do, well, I mean, they're leasing it, so.
At least the playhouse, too.
Just depends, I guess, on the parameters of the lease. I mean, if you're.
I believe there's language in there that asks that they present to us what those capital improvements are, so that we are in agreement with them as they progress.
And that was my, would have been my question, in terms of, do they already have the capital fund, some commitments?
I'd like to ask Mr. Watley to come up, and maybe personally speak on that topic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for your questions. Which one should I tackle first?
Up to you, up to you.
Anywhere you want.
Whatever you'd like.
My memory is getting a little shorter, so.
I asked a question regarding the funds.
We do not at this point. We're still working, well, at this point, we have a capital campaign committee established, but until the lease was formalized, we haven't taken any action yet to announce a capital campaign. But once we have a plan for the kind of changes we would like to make in the facility, then obviously with council and the city staff's blessing, we would then be able to make an ask document and pursue the funding at that point. So, funding is not in hand for this at this moment.
I'm just thinking, in regards to the lease, if the capital improvements aren't made, how is this, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I didn't read the lease in its full grandeur, I'm sure, but please educate me. If capital improvements are not made, is the lease staying as it is for five years, just to be occupied according to what the summary is?
The facility would not be suitable for us to do what we would like to do if it stays in its current position, but I do want to wave this flag. We're not proposing a grandiose refit of the facility. It certainly won't match the flagship we have on Newberry Street. It essentially is going to be a stage across where a half-room is built now, where the old stage used to be, at a minimum that, plus ideally later on, some seating to cover the slope, and depending on the funding and the community's response, some repair work to the interior for better insulation, better site, and just a nice, stronger building. Any of the theatrical equipment that the Aiken Community Theater may take there at the end of the lease, if it's not renewed, in its five-year increment system, we would remove that, but the changes to the interior of the building otherwise would remain.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jessica.
I was going to ask Thurman to elaborate on what you're able to do in its current condition, how you're able to utilize that space prior to any capital changes, maybe.
Currently, this is, believe it or not, we have filled up the theater on Newberry Street, because our programming has just grown so well. We're on top of ourselves for rehearsals. We do 10 plays a year, which, in our year-round season, which is quite elaborate for a community our size. We cannot adequately rehearse all of our shows in the current facility, because once the season starts, we're in a pipeline that just rolls and rolls and rolls. Thanks to the recreation department's good nature, they've been allowing us to use what's available there as a rehearsal space for the first month or so of a show before we can transfer it to, we call it the mothership, the Newberry Street Theater. So, it's been a great, great asset to us in that regard. But in the earlier iteration of this, there was discussion about if we could have a stage in some comfortable area for people to sit, we could do workshops there, we could do small performances for basically workshop graduation events, that sort of thing. So, that's probably, at this point, our highest use of it, based on the success of any capital campaign we might be able to put together. If it exceeds what we're expecting right now, then great. But right now, we're looking at dressing it up primarily for rehearsals, workshops, and simple performances, nothing to rival what we put on the main stage or the Bactel Experimental Theater stages in the Newberry facility.
Thank you so much. And I'm a major fan of what ACT does, and I think, you know, as we hear this, and I think about that building being empty and not used, and really, the longer it's not used, the worse its condition. I like the vision, I like what you're doing, I like that it's being repurposed, and quite frankly, you know, after five years, we can address all these things, but I think for the meantime, it seems like the right direction for the community, for your mission, and for that building. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, fresh on memory, it's been a while since I've been in that facility. How large, what's the dimensions of that building? Thurman, do you know? Wanted to know.
It's smaller than our current facility on Newberry Street.
That's about all we know.
I'm not sure it is at its highest use that we put to it. We could put 190 seats in there if they were really close together. So, probably any configuration for seating now, given the adjustments that have been made there, 150 comfortably would probably be its max, my best guess at the moment.
And even during PRT's usage of that facility, the floor remained slow, we had a very small space to operate any type of the ceramics program that Stuart mentioned. So, it's still set up with that theatrical stall on the interior.
Okay. Perfect work. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Bo.
Thank you.
Very much.
All in favor?
Is the discussion over?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because to your end, you're suggesting that we put stipulation within the lease for what?
If we need to use it for something, we should have a right to use it. This way, we don't have a right.
Well, we're leasing to them to do what they do. I mean, you and I.
We do the same at, across the street, but we have a right to use it. And I know a couple of times, we've had to schedule stuff, and we've had some conflicts.
So, what you're just saying in the thought process is, do we have that on this property on Newberry Street?
Yes, we do.
In the lease agreement? So, you're just saying the same thing?
Exactly.
That we already have, which probably is not a bad.
It's protection for us, that's all it is.
We can take.
We may never use it, but we, in the future, we may need it for something.
We could do it, I guess, several ways. I guess we could do a, pass this as is, come up, and then, if the city attorney, please correct me, have like an MOU that calls for the usage so many days in a defined period of time, and other stipulations. Could that be a solution?
I was just going to suggest to pass this lease on second reading with a provision delegating the authority to the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate a use agreement with the community playhouse that would be added as an addendum to the lease prior to being signed in full.
And we will, we can bring this back as information at probably as early as the next meeting.
You will reach out to them and make sure they're in agreement to this?
Absolutely, we will. Yes.
So, all in favor of passing revisions?
Stated by the attorney?
Yeah.
Stated by?
What who said?
Stated by attorney Gary Smith.
Who filed the move? Who moved?
Okay, I'll make the.
We, Miss C's too.
It's going to make you all accept the revisions.
Support that, okay.
Okay. No, ask for the vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Moving down to item number seven, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to authorize an interfund loan for capital project sales tax for Project Smith Hazel Swimming Pool Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Edie Gerro. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We have before you tonight, second reading of this ordinance. As you know, the voters of Aiken County, November sixth of last year, passed, uh, the fourth round of the capital project sales tax, and within the city's list of projects, we had money designated for upgrades at Smith Hazel, including the replacement of the swimming pool. At that time, based on the information that we had, we were given a quote of five hundred thousand, or an estimate, excuse me, of five hundred thousand dollars. That was in late two thousand seventeen, uh, after we issued some RFQ and solicitation of quotes, we discovered that that estimate was, um, well below what the actual, um, final quote, quote was. It went, instead of being, uh, around five hundred thousand, was a million, two hundred thousand. So, we were faced with the dilemma of bringing this to council with, because one of the things, when this project was started, it was with the hope and expectation that the project would be completed by the beginning of the swim season and two, around Memorial Day, two thousand twenty. So, we brought this to council, uh, at work session last week, and had some good, um, good, hard discussion about this project, the fact it came in almost two and a half times over budget, and weighed that against the, uh, the timing of it. And what the ordinance is recommending that passed on first reading is that we do some additional borrowing ahead. It still leaves us within budget of the money set aside for Smith Hazel. However, we, um, to, to complete some of the other portions of that renovation project, we are going to pursue some grants similar to what was described at the very beginning of this meeting, some land water conservation fund grants to complete some of the exterior work that was on the ballot, including, uh, improvements and upgrades to the walking track and the tennis courts, uh, and basketball court. So, we have before you tonight, the second reading of this, um, interfund loan for this project at Smith Hazel.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
I just wanna reiterate that this project wasn't misquoted or misbudgeted, it's, it's really a, a completely different scope, and that's why the price has significantly increased. And in my opinion, the scope is something that I feel the city should definitely pursue.
I just want, and Ed, I'm gonna repeat something you said that has been discussed in the community since that, the last meeting, previous meeting about this project, that it does a lot for a portion of our community, the north, that will help to improve the image, increase development opportunities, economic development opportunities, and that is what many folks are looking at. Plus, we were liking with activities for many children who do not have transportation this past summer, and they look forward to that pool opening, um, and the pleasures of just being in the water. But when you have families that are making minimum wage, uh, working two to three jobs, that is their outlet, their only outlet. Many folks go to the beaches and all these other fun stuff, and my children are included with that. But you have kids that never leave Aiken, South Carolina. That pool is their beach. So, Ed, kudos to you for making that comment, because that has touched a lot of hearts when you made that.
And I'd just like to say, this pool is always open to the public. It's open to anyone in this room that would like to go and swim there. But this is also a place where kids in, especially in District One and on the north side, this is where they learn to swim. There are no families with pools in the backyard. So, this is like their country club, this is where they hang out, this is their family why. This is a place where swimming lessons are conducted, but also, summer camps take advantage of bringing their groups there to play. And I'm, I'm really happy to see that we're going a step farther and adding a splash pad. And if you've ever driven around this area and seen the pool house, I think you would probably be ashamed that we have let this stood so long without any improvements. So, this is definitely an asset for District One, but especially for the city of Aiken. And we just, I approve, I mean, I appreciate the support from my fellow council members. Now, we did have one council member that is absent tonight, and, uh, he has a statement that I'm gonna read out to you. I think that, and this is Dick Duarte, who represents District Three. I think this should be a fixed-price contract with no provision for change. I also advocate a daily penalty, five thousand dollars, if the project is not completed by May thirty-first. Finally, we should ask our staff to aggressively monitor the progress of this project and make periodic reports to council. In a perfect world, I think spending an extra seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to meet an artificial deadline is an abuse of taxpayer money. With added effort, we should be able to get this project far closer to the original costs. The addition of features of the pool not discussed by council was not appropriate. Dick Duarte.
Okay, just to, uh, sack that, appreciate that. It is going to be a positive, as we, we've discussed, and I've been giving credit to, and that is absolutely, uh, it brings the community up, and that, that is an area that will grow. The city can see these houses get fixed up, it's already happening, and there's more that will come, this will benefit all of that. With that in mind, we better address the parking at some point in time. There's really not adequate parking for those who want to drive there. I took swimming lessons in the old Eustis Park Pool, which is, now I got a building on top of it, so, that, that, that's not available anymore, it also probably shows my age. But, um, from a standpoint of, it is the only pool within the city, and I think it's positive all the way around, and we should look at it that way. And, um, let's look at the parking, too, as to how we can have better parking for everybody and associated.
The South's best small town should have a community pool.
Let me just say that you hear us talk about districts. Each one of us sitting here represents a district, and for the most part, the issues differ in terms of focus and need, depending on which district you represent. And I will tell you that, as I watch the council that I serve with, this is Lassie personally, it is as if, Andrea, for example,'s issues are different. She's dealing with culling and deer. I'm, I'm, I'm being real. This is, it's different. But, but she can put her hat on, and Gail can deal with the culling and deer, she can put her hat on, as if we represent those districts, and trying to understand what each person is enduring based on their constituency base. And that is the beauty of this council, that we can shift, and these folks have driven the community, that we are ridden in there and seeing the need and the problems, and we can shift based on the needs, and empathize and sympathize with folks as we address those problems. And that is, that's what you have in terms of the beauty of this council that serve you, the city of Aiken, so.
And this is, this is just, it's important. Our job as a council is to, is, is, is safety, through our public safety, is parks and rec through our community needs, our children, our elders, and, um, and infrastructure, really, in my eyes. That, 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 those should be our priorities, and this particular project falls within the priorities of a city council. And, um, I, I don't agree that we're being overcharged because we need this done by a certain time. We are pressuring, and sure, there may be some costs attributed to that, but it is not fair for us to be the city of Aiken and get all these accolades, and not be able to provide a basic right to the children of this community, not to mention elders that maybe want to go to a swimming hole. So, um, I, I think that if you see the plans and you understand the plans, you will understand the price tag. It is a different scope, and so it's not, here's what we budgeted for because we just, we're gonna fix a pool. Now, we have completely revamped a project that is five thousand levels above what we initially intended to do. So, it's very important that we understand that as a community. So, I will say it again, it's important for our children to have this option, because like Ms., uh, Councilwoman Diggs and Councilwoman Price mentioned, not everybody has the opportunity to have a pool in their backyard, to have a community neighborhood pool, or to go to the beach, or the lake. They don't have those options, and we should always provide that option. That is our responsibility as city council.
And I do not agree with Mr. Duarte's statement. It's an abuse of taxpayers' money. I've had a lot of comments from people that contacted me after the first reading and said, this is a waste of taxpayers' money. Well, these people pay taxes, too. So, why can't they have a pool? Why can't we have a pool? Why can't we make sure that all the, the needs in this city is met?
I just want to add one thing. One of the biggest comments I've gotten on this thing is, we don't have enough fixtures in the bathrooms, and we need to take a look at that, and I agree with that a hundred percent.
All in favor?
Jessica has a comment.
I'm sorry. Here from our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Jessica Campbell.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woltz, we had a meeting with the contractors today, and the plan has been revised to add an additional, um, toiletry in both the men's and the women's.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jessica.
That's what I like, instant action.
Can't get any more instant than that.
Jessica should get it done before the meeting's over.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to item number eight, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to sell property to South Carolina Highway Department for right-of-way for Hitchcock Parkway Road improvements by title, an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken, oops, excuse me, get on this stuff, yes, um, the city of Aiken to convey real property to the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Is there a motion?
So moved. Eddie G.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Who's second? He had his hand up. You said second.
The matter you shake, either one, whichever you feel.
Councilwoman Price, second. Comments from staff?
I would like to begin my comments by stating, we did ask, I, I was asked to have someone from DOT at the last meeting, and I did reach out to the DOT engineer, and I do not see him. He was made aware of this meeting, so we can discuss this item, and if we want to continue it to the next meeting, that is fine, but, uh, we did attempt to have someone from DOT here, and I thought he was going to be here based on the conversation I had. So, we do have, as part of the Hitchcock Parkway improvements, they are in the right-of-way acquisition portion of the project. The actual shovels in the ground will begin summer of two thousand and twenty, so a little less than a year from now. So, as part of their right-of-way acquisition, they are appro, they, they wish to acquire from the city about two tenths of an acre, um, adjacent to Peggy's Pond property, which the city owns, which is between Dibble Road and Highway four twenty-one. And the, uh, we put in there the Exhibit A that we got the day of the meeting, and I know council had questions about the location of a guardrail and so on, and we do not have anyone from DOT here to answer those questions. However, the guardrail is going to not be in the center of the road, it is going to be off, on the side of the road to protect, I guess, folks from going down the, there is a small embankment at that, at that location where we own Peggy's Pond. So, uh, I am just, as my comments stating, answering that question, but if you would like, we can continue this, or if you feel like you have enough information, we can vote it on and proceed with the sale of the property to the DOT for this project.
I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine.
Proceed.
Comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Comments from council? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to item number nine, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving development agreement with Beaufort Street LLC for Presley Station on Beaufort Street by title, an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into development agreement with Beaufort Street LLC for the development of property located on Beaufort Street, northeast TPN one twenty-one dash oh seven dash oh three dash zero 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 one. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ladies. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. As we were discussing in, briefly in the work session, we do have this project before us, it's second reading. I would like to state for the record where we were on September twenty-third and where we are now. At the September twenty-third meeting, we did approve first reading of this development agreement, this ordinance, with an entity that subsequent to first reading that, uh, the LLC, uh, one of the development partners withdrew from the project, and we were notified of that last Wednesday, I believe. And the, uh, late last Thursday, so four days ago, we got a call that the developer, the, the owner of the property, uh, Beaufort Street LLC wished to continue with the development agreement as written. And I know tonight, we have the engineer for the project, Tilden Hildebrand is here, as well as, um, the, the property, or the property owner. And what essentially this project will do is, we, in order for this project to be built, we must upgrade the lift station. The developer has agreed to pay for the cost to upgrade the lift station, and then upon completion and inspection and review of the cost, we will then remit back to the developer up to seventy percent of the cost, because we estimate that approximately thirty percent of the cost will, uh, will be the, uh, part of, the portion of the capacity of Presley Station will be on this upgraded lift station. And it will also, this, once complete, this lift station will also allow for additional development and sewer access in that general area, which is bordered by, uh, Beaufort Street basically goes down the center of it, and the property both on the left-hand side and the right, or the west and the east side. the right, or the west and the east side, um, all the way, uh, over near where the, um, SPCA is. So, we have before you tonight, uh, the second reading of the ordinance, but, uh, we do have the, uh, Beaufort Street LLC, which is the entity that the property owner has formed for this project. And, um, this project, I know couns, councils, uh, it's a significant development project, and one that, uh, has been waited on with some anticipation, and I do want to compliment, um, the property owner and also, uh, Tim O'Brien for shepherding this thing through.
Thank you. You said, we have the developers?
We, we do, we have, uh, his engineer and the, uh, property owner here, uh, this evening, the developer.
Can we have comments from them before the audience?
I mean, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to make to the council tonight, either of you?
No, we're just thankful, and also, um, just ready to get this private started.
We're thankful as well, and we're ready for you to start tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely, we want the same thing.
We want you to start tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I think we're, we're also, we're getting ready to start, uh, pulling the disturbance permits, so hopefully, uh, really soon.
How long is construction?
Um, it will take, uh, once we get all the permits and, uh, everything in order, it'll probably take about between 180 to 250 days to have the infrastructure in.
Very good. We look forward to it.
Long as the weather's good.
We're going to pray for good weather.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sarah, do you need anything else on him? Sarah, do you have, what do you need with this name and?
Name?
Matthew Smothers.
An address. Address, give her an address, where are you from?
Um, 121 Rogers Avenue, Hartsville, South Carolina, 29550.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? Mrs. Johnson, this would be very close to your house.
I'm aware of it, waiting.
Waiting for it. Okay. Comments from council?
Um, with you, let's get started. I'd make Tilden say something, but I'm not giving.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business. First item on the new business is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the 2019-20 budget for Woodward House roof and painting exterior project. By title, it's an ordinance amending the budget of the City of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilman, Councilman Woltz?
He doesn't speak.
Okay.
I was afraid she wouldn't take me this time.
Bud's sitting here in the middle.
Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have before you, uh, we, we did budget in the, uh, in our annual budget, maintenance for the Woodward House, which is where our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Administration offices are located on Banks Mill Road. We did receive three sealed bids. Um, the total for, uh, the new roof and exterior paint, uh, came in over budget, and due, uh, it was due primarily to, uh, the front porch roof support failure, as well as, uh, lead paint, um, um, at the Woodward House. So that resulted in the overage of approximately $24,000. We do have funds in building depreciation available for this, uh, to complete this, uh, work for the Woodward House. And it is before council, this budget amendment is before you tonight for first reading.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
This is where Jessica's office is, right?
That is correct.
Your citizens' corner.
She's spending a lot of money tonight.
Yeah, yeah. That's an expensive move.
She helping us bring in a lot of money though. Okay. All in favor?
And Councilwoman Price was stepped out of the ring.
We still have a quorum?
There's four.
Yeah, very good.
All right. Did you get that, Sarah? Thank you. Moving down to item number two on the new business, first reading of an ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year 2019-20 and approve an interfund loan for the purchase of roll carts. By title, it's an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to amend the budget for fiscal year 2019-20, and to authorize the city to lend up to $726,830 to provide financing to fund the purchase of roll carts for garbage and recycle collection. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have, uh, in the budget, we have money set aside for purchase of garbage trucks, which we have already ordered. Uh, this was approved through the normal budget process. We are transitioning, um, and will be rolling out, uh, no pun intended, to the citizens here that, uh, with the, uh, the, the new garbage trucks, they will be an automated trucks. We do have one automated truck in our fleet. Uh, we are going to move to, um, all automated trucks for solid waste, the rubbish portion of solid waste. The cans, um, that we, that are older cans that have the aluminum bars on them, are, they will work with the truck, but they will not last, uh, very long, we believe, with these automated arms. So as part of our solid waste fee that council initiated in the, um, this budget, we have, for the first time, a cart replacement fee of 78 cents per bill per month. And what that replacement fee allows is, uh, the purchase of carts. These carts that we're recommending that we borrow ahead and pay back will, um, last approximately 12 years, uh, they have a 12-year life, and we, we will be able to pay the loan back within seven years. We will add to the, uh, interfund borrowing, uh, the local LGIP rate, um, as we pay these back. The, we did, we have done a lot of research on this. Uh, it started, I think, when, once Lex Kirkland became the interim director at Public Services, and after a lot of back and forth, we believe that, um, going forward, this, uh, plan will benefit us, um, on several levels. It will, um, free up some of our staff as well. They will not have to ride on the back of the garbage trucks, and ultimately, that will allow those staff members to begin doing some work on our, in our grounds, and picking up litter, raking, uh, and, and doing, uh, that sort of maintenance work. So, uh, we have before you tonight, an ordinance to amend the budget to allow us to purchase the roll carts, uh, for this project.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
I, I have one. I think, I think this is great that we're doing this, I think we need to do it, but I also think we need to strengthen up our solid waste program, of what we pick up, what we don't pick up, the amount of stuff we pick up, and we need to stand behind this department in doing that, not have somebody come and say, oh, I didn't have it out, can you come back and do it? We need to put that in place when we roll out this program and stand behind it, and give these people some backup. I, uh, talked to one of the guys on one of the grapple trucks the other day, he's, he was working at 7:30 at night. He said, you know, I'm just happy if I get a Saturday off because we're so far behind. I mean, that's just, you know, he said, he spent a long time filling his one truck up more than once at one spot. And we, we need to back them up. And if people put more out, they need to be charged for it. So I think we should publish it in the paper, that we're going to do it for, for a period of time beforehand, and then, even if we get a call from somebody saying, hey, can you help me out this time, we've got to say no and move forward.
And we've talked about that for two years since I've been on council, and we haven't made any decision on that, and I, I agree with Councilman Woltz. We, I mean, we're only complicating the app, the operation, which we have a very good one, and if we can streamline those things, it'd be a lot more effective.
I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say that those comments are music to staff's ears, and we would, uh, be delighted to bring to you, uh, very soon, like before the end of the calendar year, early, in the next meeting or two, probably, we'll say the first meeting in November, a recommendation on the solid waste, uh, the, the yard waste specifically, as well as, uh, touch on some of the other issues that you raised.
To start this first, January 1st?
Yes, yes. And, uh, thank you, uh, I appreciate that. That's something that, um, I know we've had a number of discussions with council, and, um, we, uh, we appreciate that, and we will bring something, I think, that, uh, will, number one, meet the citizens' needs, but also be, uh, help the operation run more efficiently. Because certainly, the more efficiently we run, the less often, uh, we need to come to council for rate increases, and when we have to come for rate increases, if it's run efficiently, they should not be as drastic, say, as this last rate increase.
Right. And, and I do think, correct me if I'm wrong, during, just recently, haven't we changed Wes's title from interim director?
That, yeah, thank you. Um, I would like to note that, um, Lex, uh, today is his first day as, uh, with the interim tag removed, so he is the, the Public Services Director. Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, Lex.
Well, if they're behind now, in a month, it's going to be tough. So January the 1st, in Farnough, you got your work cut out, Lex. It's, it's going to be interesting in a month to try to keep up with it, but don't let them push you around.
Well, we're going to have to work out things like getting the carts to the curb properly at all, but.
And we are looking, that is such a good point, and, um, I know you and I've had some good discussions, and we're looking into some of those options. Uh, for example, if there's entities out there that would do that, you know, roll it out. Certainly, early, early into the process, we'll have some city staff, the city staff that would be on the back of the truck will be there the first week or a couple of weeks to make sure everything, everyone has an understanding of how the carts are supposed to be rolled out and where, but, correct, once this is implemented, I think, uh, the citizens will appreciate it, but, um, it will aid in staff efficiency.
Very good.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number three, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to convey real estate to Prothrow Rental Properties LLC. By title, an ordinance approving the sale of property between Park Avenue and Richland Avenue to Prothrow Rental Properties LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion for discussion. Comments from staff?
Yes, we have been approached, uh, by this, uh, the entity that owns the property, and there is an abandoned roadway, uh, of Berkeley Street between Park Avenue and Richland Avenue. Uh, the, there is no, there are no city utilities within the right-of-way, and we recommend, uh, the, they had an appraisal done of the property. Uh, it's a very specialized type of appraisal, abandoned rights-of-way, so this, um, I know I leaned on, uh, Councilmember Giardo for advice, uh, at this point, but I do think, uh, at, at this time, uh, we are bringing to council first reading of this ordinance to, uh, convey this, uh, portion of property, which is a little over two acres, to Prothrow, uh, so they can have contiguity, I guess, across, uh, the property. I think right now there is a temporary or some sort of improvement or structure on the piece that, that is owned by the city, that's the abandoned right-of-way, and I think, um, that certainly needs to be addressed, uh, if the property stays in city's, uh, control. But, uh, before you tonight is this proposal to sell this abandoned right-of-way to Prothrow Rental Properties.
Comments from the audience? Comments from the council?
I have a question. Uh, who is the spokesperson for this? I see you have a, um, someone that's close on the, you have the attorney, I'm assuming Mary.
Good, I'm glad she's here, because I wasn't going to be explaining it like you did.
I'm Mary Gwen, my address is 210 Colony Parkway, Aiken, South Carolina, 29803.
Uh, this document, um, that we have has lots of moving parts that I don't quite understand.
Okay.
And I looked at your, the request, along with the other land sales that's in this document, and I'm trying to figure out, one, the connection of our selling this land to the other parcels, is there, what, are there other things planned? What should I know that I don't know, and, and if, if I'm asked, what's going on with this? I cannot explain.
The adjacent pieces beside this, um, have been in the Prothrow family for a very long period of time. For simplicity's sake, they formed the LLC, so they simply didn't have to run around and get a bunch of different signatures of a bunch of different family members. Um, there is, this is, was a platted road right-of-way, so, um, if they, council did approve this, and the family purchased this property, they still could not go and develop it at that point, because under South Carolina law, if a road has been platted, it can only be used for road purposes unless you go through the formal abandonment process. Um, and you all may recall, um, one that was in the newspaper out in Windsor with the corn farmers that went on for years and years and went all the way to the appellate court. So it is by no means a sure bet that they could ever develop this. Um, they are interested in exploring the option. The appraisal, and it's a conversation that I had with Mr. Giardo, um, the appraisal does reflect the limited use. It was a very expensive appraisal, it was very hard to find an appraiser that was qualified to appraise road rights-of-way. We actually approached a number of appraisers in Aiken, trying to find someone local, and they all said that they could not, didn't have the capabilities to do it. Um, so, the, the family does want to acquire this property, there is a building right there in the middle of it right now, which actually is being taxed to them, if you look at the aerial map, you'll see there's a square right in the middle that they've been paying taxes on for a number of years. Um, they would, I can, Carl McMillan could probably speak more to what they would intend to do if they were able to acquire the property and then abandon the right-of-way. Uh, but I can, I, I was asked to be here to speak to the legalities of the right-of-way.
Okay. I was interested in that piece, but also, what, what's going through the heads here? What's, what are you thinking in terms of moving forward?
Well, I think you all have the aerials in front of you. I'm Carl McMillan, uh, 132 Dupree Place, Aiken, South Carolina. Um, I represent the family, it is their intent to, um, sell the property as a city block, which is what it would end up being.
Mm-hmm.
If you notice, the, the one section that's closest to the livery barn really has limited value or use because of the way it's shaped. Um, so at this point, I mean, obviously, we still, we have to get it purchased, then we still have to go through the abandonment process, which is a six-month process, but the long-term goal would be to market this city block, and it's the gateway to Aiken. And it was, it's outside the opportunity zone, I'm afraid, but it is, um, we would, we would feel like that it's a, would be a great opp, development opportunity in whole. What that final product would be at this point, we don't know, but, um, but it's, you know, this, this fam, this property's been owned by the family for, for many, many years, um, and they actually do own two other pieces that are inside the opportunity zone that, that will be for sale as well. But we do kind of feel like this one is, gives us a, a clean slate to work with, and that, that does have some potential for the family as well as the community.
And you mentioned the perfect words, the gateway into the city on the east side of town, and that's where I, that's why I had a lot of questions in terms of what is, what is this going to be as a gateway, um, as we enter our city? But you can't answer that.
I, I mean, you know, I'd love, I, I mean, I, I mean, you know, I'd love, I mean, if you want to dream big, a, a big apartment complex with, with retail space down front, like something you see on Coleman Boulevard in Charleston. But we don't really have that formulated at this time. But we do feel like that the only opportunity to make any sort of impact with it is to combine the, into one parcel.
Right. And I agree with you. I support that. And you've just said the perfect words in terms of the dream. If we could have that dream come true, that would be perfect on that, in that area of town.
That's our hope. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Comments? All in favor? And that's unanimous?
Yeah, I, I'd studied the apartment. You could speak to how it got discounted and all of that. I, I learned a lot from Mary on this, as a matter of fact. So thank you,
Moving down to item number four. First reading of an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real estate to Coinbow Associates Incorporated. By title, an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real estate, real property, to Coinbow Associates LLC. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I have a second?
I'll second it.
Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do, again, have a, this was an odd sort of circumstance. And again, it, it does involve, Mary Gwen reached out to me. We, Coinbow LLC is purchasing property at, it's approximately 50 acres that's at Old Airport Road, right there at the curve across from Citizens Park. Years ago, when the DOT, pardon me, when the DOT reoriented the footprint of Old Airport Road, citizens, a little tiny portion of Citizens Park was separated by the road. So we now have three pieces that potentially could be the, in the interest of adjacent property owners. And the first one that I guess reached out to us is this Coinbow Associates out of Mount Pleasant. And initially, they were looking at an easement, but after discussion with the city attorney, and we felt like conveying it is just a very, very small piece for $1,000. And we think that's a fair price because the, the little piece is not developable. You couldn't improve it other than maybe putting a dri, other than putting a driveway on. You couldn't put a building or a structure. So they either need an easement from us if we're going to continue to own it. And then, of course, that's maintenance or maintaining for us in theory. Or we can transfer it to them for a price. And we recommended the latter, so the city does not have to continue to maintain it as the owner.
Very good. Thank you. Comments from the audience? You may as well. You may as well just sit up front so you won't have to walk so far.
Well, fortunately, this is my last agenda item tonight. Again, Mary Gwen, 210 Colony Parkway, Aiken, South Carolina, 29803. And if I, I wanted to make a correction to what our city manager said. This would, this proposal is to purchase the entire sliver, the .38 acres is the entire sliver. I have reached out to the landowners that have a substantial portion in front of their piece. That is Todd Gall and Mike Caldwell. And I believe their, their entity is Designer Lots. And I did tell them about this. I knew they would see the postings. And I said, we would certainly be willing to convey to you. And they said, okay. You know, they, it wasn't very pressing on them, I would say. But I have started the discussions with them if they'd be interested in doing that. My clients do have this under contract to purchase. It was a foreclosed property. So the bank is pressing very hard on them to get it closed. We did have to get an extension to come in front of you. So in the interest of time, that's why we did it, where we would just be acquiring the entire .38 acre sliver and then would go to the neighbors and see if they would like to acquire the extra portion. Also, there was one, it is not platted on the aerial maps. So the 15 acres that my clients are purchasing is in the county. It would be their preference that this also was in the county, so they don't have one tiny piece in the city and the rest in the county. They may seek to annex into the city at some point in the future when they know their plans for the property. But that was just one item that we noted tonight when we were talking.
Thanks for the heads up.
But they've got, they've got a bargain for $1,000. Would like to see that in the city.
Well, they're, they're working on development plans. I assure you, this will be a, a welcome addition to this neighborhood.
And if they do come receiving, asking for city services, since they are contiguous to the city, in order to receive them, they will need to annex.
Yes, and they are well aware of that.
This includes the old Dogwood store, or is that?
No, this is completely unimproved.
This is extra.
What they're purchasing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only, what they are purchasing is that, the brick home that's really close to the road, right in the curve.
Yeah.
And then there was a shed sort of barn in the back. And I, that was completely destroyed in a storm of a month or so ago. And there are a couple of dilapidated mobile homes in the rear, which are being occupied.
So it's not the old florist?
Right. It's not, no, no. The florist is, if you're on the road, the florist is to the right.
Okay.
Yeah. This is the 15 acres beside that one.
Thank you. Comment, any more comments from council?
Stuart had sent this to me. That's a gracious plenty for the situation, I think. For what it's worth.
That was, that was my thought as well. I know it's council's preference to normally have an appraisal anytime we sell property. But it just, from my untrained eye, it looked like there really wasn't anything else we could do with it.
This picture does not do it justice. It is smaller than that.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Moving down to item number five. Resolution approving acceptance of deed of dedication for streets, curbs, and gutters in DuPont Landing. By title, it's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication for streets, curbs, and gutters in DuPont Landing from DuPont Landing LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have before you tonight this deed of dedication for streets and roads and curbs in DuPont Landing. The streets include Bennett Avenue, Benedict Street, Claflin Drive, and Voorhees Street. Our engineering staff has reviewed the streets, curbs, and gutters and roads, and recommends that the city accept this deed of dedication.
Comments from the audience? Let's see. Mr. Harvey is here for DuPont Landing. Any comments? Comments from council? All in favor? And that's unanimous. And last on our agenda is a resolution approving acceptance of deed of dedication for streets and utility lines and related infrastructure in Foxhaven Section 3. By title, it's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication for streets and utilities in Foxhaven, Section 3, from Metro Homesites LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have, Madam Mayor Protem, this resolution. And it is for Section 3 of Fox, the Foxhaven Development. And it includes the street, sanitary sewer, storm sewer lines, and related infrastructure. And our engineering staff has inspected and reviewed these utilities and infrastructure and streets, and recommends acceptance.
Very good. Thank you. Comments from the audience? Comments from council? All in favor? And that's unanimous. We removed the item number one on the petitions and requests. Everything else is information. With no further business. I move that we go back into executive session, adjourned from this meeting. So we are officially adjourned.